Go ahead and call the December meeting to order from the last poll meeting of this year. We started to appreciate everybody's business and invited them back. There was a poll meeting. We have one once a month, so if y'all two have seen it at this time, we're gonna ask Mr. Hitterson to come off the screen and say something.
All right, everybody, just by heads. Dear Ellen, Father, thank you for blessing us with this beautiful weather. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to come together to serve the students, the staff, and the community of Joshua ISD. We thank you for the precious gift of life and the blessings that surround us. May your light shine brightly in our hearts, guiding us to embrace the true spirit of the holidays. Love, compassion, generosity. Help us to extend kindness to one another, reaching out to those in need and sharing the abundance of your blessings. Bring comfort to those who are suffering, and may the warmth of your love heal the wounds of the broken heart. Bless those with your love and teachings that inspire us to live with purpose and to cherish the bonds of family and friendship. Bless our homes with laughter, love, and unity, and guide our steps in the coming year, and may we continue to walk in your light. Thank you for your constant presence in our lives, in your name we pray. Amen.
I think we have a couple of special places in the South of our...
I do. The first one is Mara Ott. Come on up there. And so Mara, parents are Carol and Nicole Ott. Mara, it goes to North Joshua Elementary, is in fifth grade. Her hobbies and interests are basketball, CrossFit, and guitar. She's interested in helping others in sport and is a member of CEO, run club, and alcohol, the video announcement team. She has one sister and a golden doodle in Willow. And when Mara grows up, she'd like to be a kindergarten teacher or a relative. The next one is Ife Alokatune, and parents are Rakini and Olar Alokatune. And Ife is in North Joshua, well, in fifth grade. Ife enjoys gaming, math, music, soccer, science, and tennis. In addition, at school, he likes soccer, kickball, and is a member of the robotics club and CEOs. Ife was born in Kentucky, moved to Nigeria, then to Texas, has two sisters and one brother, and wants to be a lawyer when he grows up. That's been around.
Ready and slowly.
Her allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm in the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
I'm in the British state.
Joshua ISD, we are the prime model of education for us.
We're good too.
We've got something a little bit new this year. We've got a little special treat. And that special treat is our North Joshua Elementary flag. They just come in and say, "Brother."
Christmas through the eyes of a child looks happy and merry and bright. Christmas through the eyes of a child looks joyful and peaceful and filled with light. May you see too, through the eyes of a child, may you see too, how glorious, glorious, glorious,
Hot, hot, oh, we got it. Hot, hot, hey, we got it. Hot, hot, oh, we got it. Hot, hot, oh, we got it. Hot, hot, so, we got it. Hot, hot, yo, we got it. Hot chocolate. Here we only got one rule. Here we only got one rule. Never, ever let it cool. Never, ever let it cool. DJ cooking in the pot. Jimmy got hot chocolate. Hot, hot, hey, we got it. Hot, hot, oh, we got it. Hot, hot. Yeah, we got it. Hot, hot, oh, we got it. Hot, hot. Hey, we got it. Hot, hot, oh, we got it. Hot, hot. Yeah, we got it. Hot, hot, oh, we got it. Hot, hot. Hey, we got it. Hot, hot, oh, we got it. Hot, hot. Yeah, we got it. Hot, hot, oh, we got it. Hot, hot. Hey, we got it. Hot, hot, oh, we got it. Hot, hot. Yeah, we got it. Hot, hot, oh, we got it. Hot chocolate.
We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin. Good tidings for Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Merry Christmas.
Okay, Snail is gonna give us our updates. Do you see Mark Lane?
All right, I'm gonna follow that. I know. I'm not that uneducated. And you definitely go over your thing. That's one of your other things. Well, I'll do the rest on here. This is our annual college and career military readiness plan. So we have presented this every year since 2018. I started looking back at my data. We've done this for a long time. So it's a pretty long document. I'm just gonna kind of hit some highlights for you. But this basically tracks our longitudinal data for our students and their progress for determining their college career military readiness as they're looking to graduate. And so you see that the TDA said it more than sixty percent of all high school seniors graduating without the need for remediation and achieving an industry-accepted certification, a living job, or enrolling in post-secondary education, or enlisting into the military. So that is the purpose of this, is we track that data. So this is our domain one student achievement. And I will remind you that when we're looking at some of this data, specifically the portion in this section, some of it is lagged data. So it is a couple of years behind. And so you will see some things on here that we, like on-ramps, that we didn't offer for a little while, but we still have data there. And then I'm glad to say that we are gonna be able to bring on-ramp data soon. So, but just keep in mind that some of this is lagged data. So you can see that during COVID, we took a little bit of a slump when we were looking at our students who met our CCMR criteria. We went from seventy-six percent to fifty-four percent. And then most recently, there have been changes in how the state is going to be accounting for this. But we are back on the rise again. So we're up to fifty-eight percent when we look at that data for the 2023. And then you can see also, we had several, twelve percent of our students, so again, we're not to our goal for our AP scoring a three on their AP exams, but that is rising. So you'll kind of see that throughout our plan. And maybe we haven't hit our goal perfectly, but we are making a lot of progress. And so associate's degree, that cohort was just getting started when we started this. And so we did have ten graduates in 2023 that graduated their associate degree. So thank you to our board for helping to make that happen. And here's the on-ramp performance that I spoke about. We did have nine students enrolled. We quit offering those courses, but we are hopefully going to bring them back for the 2024 and 2025 year. For our dual credit course enrollment, we are at twenty-one percent. So we had just a little slight drop, but that is something that we're really focusing on and trying to get more of our kids enrolled in dual credit classes. Our met TSI criteria increased to thirty-six percent. Industry-based certifications increased to twenty-three percent. And then we're gonna go down to number nine, where we had our special ed graduates. And we dropped just slightly there at twenty-three, but that number is always contingent on the class as well. So that's not a percentage, it's number of students. So that number is gonna vary depending on how many students actually graduated from that year that were considered in that population. Okay, then if we go down to our domain three, closing the gap, here you can see that this is our performance for reading academic achievement. And so this is looking at those STAR tests. And you can see that although we're not at our goal that we set for seventy percent, we again are seeing increases. And we had increases in all of our sub-pops but one in this category. So making good progress. When we look at our math academic achievement, again, we're not at our goal of seventy percent, but we either stayed the same or increased in all but one of our sub-populations. This is our growth status for ELAR. And so this is looking at academic growth for all grade levels across the district that qualify for that. And again, there has been some decrease here. So we're in all subjects, or excuse me, for all students, we're at sixty-six percent. There have been some changes made to the way the state measures this. And then in addition, there were some changes to the English standards the past couple of years, oops, sorry, that has also affected the test. And so we are looking at this through all the different resources to get that back up to the eighty percentile where we were. When we look at our growth status for math, again, that's looking at across the district, all grade levels. We're at, we're holding pretty steady of where we were last year, seventy, seventy-five percent. And so we remain very close in all of our sub-populations there as well. We're looking at our graduation rate for students. We're right on par from where our district has been traditionally, ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent, where we typically hover. And that is still the truth for last year. We were at ninety-seven point three percent. Our EL proficiency, this is looking at our percent of current EL students that are making progress towards that English language proficiency. And you can see that we were at forty-nine percent, up from forty-one percent. So making increases there. And there were some changes in the state test that as well. And so we're happy to see those gains and our students are achieving. Our student success status, so this is looking at that STAR performance, again, used in domain one, and it just disaggregates the data just a little bit differently. And so here, we have increases across the board in our sub-population. So we're very pleased with that. And we have actually exceeded our targets. So exceeding our targets in this area. Our school quality status is this, it's that same CCMR calculation that's used in domain one, except the denominator of students includes some annual graduates plus students identified as twelfth graders in the last six weeks of school who did not graduate. So gotta have a math degree on those to do some of this. But luckily, the state does a lot of it for us. And so you can see that we're hoping, we're not to our goal, but we are holding pretty steady. We're making some slight progress. And then we had just a couple little dips, but those are being addressed. And then lastly, our participation rate, this is looking at our STAR participation. And happy to say that we're at a hundred percent, which is very good. That means all of our kids who were supposed to come tested. So the data included in this plan is listed here for you. We have a lot of ongoing data that we use throughout the school year to make these decisions. And then of course, it also lets you know who is responsible for that data. And so that is normally my department, current limited instruction, with Ricky Korners' help this year, and then Kristy Clifton, our coordinator of CTE, and of course, Jalen Osgrover, our chief. Any questions from the board?
I have any questions or comments. Okay, at this time, the December tenant report.
Okay, in our workshop, we reviewed enrollment, attendance, AEA reports, child nutrition report, property tax collection, monthly financial reports, monthly and year-to-date status of special revenue funds, quarterly cash and investment report, check register, police department report, our calendar events. And now we'll go to our fall athletics score part.
All right, I'm Dan Yorman, head football coach and athletic director. Starting with football, we're one and nine this season. I had a little bit of a slow start. Installed a new offense, it took us till about game six before we got our feet on the ground. I came here to change our program and to change it for the better. And I think that in order to do that, I think the numbers, you gotta make them make sense. So stat-wise, if you go back, my first season here, I was in twenty-one, I don't think that you necessarily take that season and see the impact that was made. So if you took that season and connected it to the previous three, you'll come up with around eighty-five wins, which is almost the exact number that you got in the last two seasons. So I think we've had a huge impact, and we've, we've made a ton of progress, even though on the varsity level, we haven't seen that just yet. I believe that if you see the trend, things are headed in the direction that they need to go. One of the things that I think is important whenever you are looking at the impact you have on a program, one is looking at the, at the tallies of wins, but I think the other is, look at the people within the program. And if you go back to eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, you have eighty to ninety-five players on the high school roster from ninth grade up. We had a hundred and sixty-four this year. So not only are the wins changing, so are the, the numbers within the program. So I think we're headed in the right direction. We're doing everything that we can within the offseason to try and make, the only thing that isn't green on this last column is yellow. So we're trying to eliminate all the red and make sure that we change everything. And I think we're, we're in a good place right now. I think we're heading in the right direction.
Okay, this year, I mean, we had a really, really good year all the way down. My both freshman teams, they lost a total of four matches together. One of the B-team losses was to our A-team, so can't fault them there. My JV finished second, and then varsity finished second after not making playoffs last year. That was one of our really goals this year, was to refocus that so that we didn't miss that again. And through kind of offseason this year, our focus is gonna be how can we get past that first round drought? Because we keep getting knocked out first round. So it's like, how do we change that mentality to go further into the playoffs? That's gonna be something that we're really focused on after Christmas break. Along with that, we had the highest finish in eleven years, the most program wins ever. So I can't, I was super excited with how we performed this year. And I lost seventeen years, but I have a really, really good core group coming back for this next season. And I have a lot of talent coming up as well. As far as my middle schools, I mean, finished, law play, maybe the eighth grade is yellow, but it doesn't really show, the wins and losses don't really show how close those wins and losses were. They had a lot of brutal matches and barely lost a lot of those matches. So as far as like where they finished, I'm really not like sad about them being in that three, five area because of how close they were to one of those schools that they played. And then my seventh grade, they did really well with most of those girls being first-time volleyball players. And then Nichols and Nichols, seventh and eighth grade, they usually always do a really, really good job. And I'm super excited about both those eighth grade classes coming up into the high school from their next year.
All right, I'm Jeff Brooks. I coached the cross-country guys, and Coach Bevel and I kind of coached everybody together. But, you know, last year was really rough on the boys' side, really both sides, just because we had replaced everybody. So we finished sixth last year. It was not real fun. Just, anyway, it took a long time since we've done that. This year, our guys finished third, qualified for regionals in probably, probably the second-best cross-country district in the state. Really, really fired up about what they did. It was, it was the same guys. Like we, they just worked their game. So anyway, the, the hope and just the conversation we've had, hopefully they're not satisfied with this, with the trip to Lovett. Because we're sure not, because Bevel and I aren't. And a chance we lose two of our top eight on the boys' side, that's a lot of dudes coming back. So pretty excited about that. Middle schools were solid, just, I mean, across the board, I mean, lots of green, both boys and girls' sides. We're excited about that. And the numbers were pretty good. So, you know, some of the things that we tried to do last spring may have helped a little bit, but... but I think Coach Bevel's gonna talk about this a little bit more. But we're gonna, one of the things we're gonna do after spring break is to get them to take a little bit more ownership in tracking their own mileage. The top guys and girls have done that for, forever. We need runners five through twelve on both sides to kind of own that instead of just work like, when coach organized the practice, we're gonna organize the practice, like we'll come more. But that's kind of the goal there. But thank y'all, it was a really good season and had a ton of fun.
I'm Craig Bevel, girls, cross-country. Look at it, we finished sixth like we did last year, so we didn't go down. Still have one regional qualifier and one academic all-state, academic all-states only for seniors. You have to have a ninety-two average or above. And I think to your, into consideration your SAT and ACT scores. And she was first team academic all-state, Alex Fredel. So that's major accomplishment on that. Our regional qualifier was Ryan Dollar Dotry. That's her second year, she's just a sophomore. If you look at our cross-country team, our varsity cross-country team this year, we had three freshmen, three sophomores, and one senior. So we're young, every girl, well, five of the seven at the district meet ran their personal best times. The other two ran season best. So they perform. As we get older, we're gonna do better, better. What Jeff, Coach Brooks talked about, we have created a Google classroom, not only for the high school kids, but also for the junior high kids as well. So we're getting in touch with them more every day, every year. So we can track them as well, and they can track theirselves. So when they get into high school, it's not gonna be a culture shock, oh guys, we're supposed to run this much? That's part, they, we get freshmen in here and they're like, oh, we never have ran this far. So it's kind of being a step in stone. So we're hopeful that'll pay off big dividends at a later date. Thank you.
I'll explain. Some of you that don't know what our scorecard is, we do scorecards, if they were talking, but we have academic span, our OCC, athletics. It gives us a quick glance at what areas we need to improve, where we're doing well. And so we report it publicly during the year. There were times of the year we took different programs. So this helps us to get an idea of what's going on.
All right, now we've got our campus presentation. So we'll have North Joshua Elementary with Tracy Green.
That's coming, he.
Go Johnson.
Yes. Um, good evening, my name is Tracy Green, and I'm the principal at Joshua Elementary School. I have with me tonight Keith Cowley and Stacy Smith that are in the audience. Good morning, they are our assistant principals at North. And had I known that the choir was gonna do a stand-up such an amazing job, I would have bartered the public speaking gig. But anyway, I hope you enjoyed the extra special Christmas treat from Miss Shelby Presley and Miss Lynn Josh. They did a great job. And while Ms. Presley orchestrated this evening's performance, she is also responsible, she is also responsible for what we have, an introduction called International Dot Day at North Joshua. And this special day is basically a commemoration of connection, collaboration, and creativity, which you got to see this evening. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and play. And that is our presentation. Thank you guys for allowing us to make our mark this evening.
Thank you very much. Now, the best part of the board meeting is our recognition.
All right, our first recognition is our varsity volleyball team. Hey, our varsity volleyball team is Coach Woodward and Coach Agston. The Joshua volleyball team is being recognized for their incredible season where they hit many milestones. This year, they had the highest finish in the grade tournament in program history, losing to the state champions in the semifinals. They had the highest district finish in eleven years and had the winning this season in program history at twenty-seven wins and nineteen losses. This team also made another playoff berth, making it the fifth appearance in six seasons. We're very proud of everything that these ladies and this program accomplished this year. Congratulations on a great season. The twenty-twenty-three roster is Chloe Dress, Trinity Smith, Peyton Kohler, Evie Walker, Tyler Poole, Kendall Bethel, Tabitha Urban, Kimber Brooks, Ashlyn Porter, Natalia Lao, Kayla Conley, Gabrielle Malanato, Addison Litke, Morgan Collier, Reagan Kohler, and Brayden Holling.
I'll go.
All right, our next recognition will be the Spirit of Joshua band. All right, here's Joshua band led by Director Steven Smooth, Director Lonnie Foster, and Director Brandon Kendy. Congratulations to the members of the Spirit of Joshua for making history at this weekend's Region Thirty TMEA All-Region Band auditions. The band has thirty-two members and are in seats up from twenty-three as the previous half. Making the freshman band were Ian Bauer, Matthew Carter, Marina Dominguez, Demetrius Holson, Tobias Holman, Lucas Hutto, Aubrey Moore, Daniella Reyes, Zoe Smith, and Amaya Washington. Making the concert band were Allison Boynton, Gillian Bustamante, Kellen Flanagan, Arfin Hussain, Pandeka Cabo, Kayden Moran, Austin Reeves, Lauren Rogers, Jacob Pena, Stetson Turnbull, and Adamson Zalanzey. Making the symphonic band were Esther Agiri, Luke Breila, Joey Buell, Martin Castillo, Jackson Dial, Lady Tatum, Riley Hush, Noah Johnson, Melody Sanchez, Nicholas Smith, and Shane Waits. In addition, seven members are moving on to the air around to compete for a seat in the TMEA TMEA, TMEA All-State Band. They are Luke Breila, Joey Buell, Jackson Dial, Lady Tatum, Riley Hush, Nicholas Smith, and Shane Waits. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, we've got one more recognition. I'm gonna call up Two Fuser, Officer Del Myers, and Commander Larry Sparks. And so we're gonna allow Mr. Sparks to give us a recollection of what happened on, uh, this morning.
Uh, yes, it was November the second, two thousand and twenty-three. I live over off of, uh, the nineteen, ninety, nineteen oh two, real close to Laughlin and, uh, what is it, Cattle Grove Elementary School. On that morning, as we all know, nineteen oh two can get pretty, uh, pretty hectic, especially that time in the morning. Uh, I was on my way to work and there's a canine, uh, had been struck, and its back had been broke, and, uh, it was in horrible dire straits. Uh, there was actually some citizens had pulled over with it as well. I was a can, I'm actually, to let you know, I'm a, Larry Sparks, I'm the staff commander over at Special Crimes Unit for the county. I actually am a Burleson police officer, uh, but I'm assigned to the, to the unit where we work narcotics. I'm also a canine handler. So I have a little compassion for canines, particularly when I see one on the side of the road that's still alive. Most people just drive by them, I can't do that. We get out, I realized that the dog is not at a safeable point. However, AO, uh, uh, the animal control out of Burleson, because we're actually in the city limits of Burleson, they didn't have anybody on call at that time because it was early in the morning. Officer Del Myers, through her contacts earlier at Joshua PD where she worked there, was able to contact Joshua who said that they were bringing out their animal control, which that's unheard of, especially in our county. If it's outside your city, you don't send animal control out to help. She was able to get that done with a simple phone call. We ended up not needing to use Joshua because Burleson actually, even though they were on call, she was really close and she showed up within a couple of minutes. I thought it was gonna be an hour, just because that's what I'm used to. With that being said, uh, the compassion that was shown, she stepped in. And I understand, I'm a canine officer, so I may have a little bit more sense of than, than a lot of people. But she stepped in, uh, we were able to get the dog's collar off. She started suiting him, she was able to identify the owner. She was able to, uh, like I said, once again, make contact with, uh, the animal control. And she did all this with, with a compassion where a lot of officers are dry and hard, particularly when it comes to, uh, to animals, uh, just because we see so much with human death that it affects us with, with all deaths. Then we were lucky enough that we had a awesome, uh, animal control officer from Burleson that also arrived. Between their two both compassion, that was a, a, a welch. The home, or the owner of the dog actually showed up, and we've had previous histories with him in the, in the past. He wanted to just take the dog home. They were able to convince him to let animal control take him so that they could put him down in a humane way. Normally I wouldn't write letters for stuff like this. If you have to, I wrote very few in my career, and I've been doing it for twenty-five years now. But the compassion and the, the ability that they were able to work together and pull this off really struck me. I actually left that scene and went and wrote that letter immediately. And I, I'm a bad, I put stuff off, but I wrote that letter immediately. And so I just wanted to tell her thank you. Understand that normally I would put the dog down, but we were on school grounds. And that's the first thing she pointed out, because we looked, we both looked around and said, we can't do it here because we're on school grounds. So, uh, but I wanted to say thank you. You don't understand how much I really appreciate that, uh, and the compassion that you showed. And so thank you very much.
That's what everybody's doing here tonight.
Okay, at this time, the COVID point, a portion of our board meeting allows individuals to address the board on any subject except personnel. Any personnel concerned should be brought directly to the attention of the superintendent. Persons attending the meeting must please sign up for or submit to the board president prior to the meeting. We ask that they keep these spaces to at least three minutes. And we've got one signed up, Mr. Jack Cook.
Good evening, Board, and thanks again for serving. I wanted to come to you guys today and thank you personally and on behalf of a large amount of Johnson County residents, of JISD footprint residents, for you guys leading the way with your vote for the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. It was very outside the box this year in how you guys were asked to allocate your votes. It was not normal and it takes a big leap of faith to trust anything that is outside the box and outside of our comfort zone. And I want to appreciate you guys for taking the time, effort, and energy to do that and to allow the citizens to communicate with you so you guys could exercise and your votes the way that you did. It's much appreciated. I think you guys were one of the first, if not the first district to do that and to not try to either straddle the ground or go with the old traditional way. And for those that don't know, the first time the citizens actually got involved with this process, and we really hope that this leads to a much more transparent way for the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors to communicate with citizens on behalf of this overall process, so everybody's a lot more comfortable with the way property taxes are assessed and so there's a lot less confusion and disgruntledness. And hopefully they'll do their part now and do an outreach and communication, but you guys did yours, you guys deserve to be recognized for that and I personally thank you, I know a lot of others do on behalf of that, so thank you very much.
I guess that's all we have signed up. Subjects, is there consent, agenda items?
Okay, yes, we talked about, or in our consent agenda items approving amendments from previous meetings of November thirteenth, November sixteenth, and November twenty-ninth. In addition to that, we have a few purchases over fifty thousand that this needs to be reviewed in our board workshop. Those include spring tuition for associate degree bill credit, our PA system for Laughlin, and then some AC unit replacements there as well. So my recommendation would approve the consent items as discussed.
Hold on, Mr. Prude, here a second.
Second.
Second, I'll make a note, Lee, here any further discussion or request? All five, six oh. Subject may consider financial audit for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three student.
Yes, Sarah Williams just completed the financial audit and she's going to come up here.
Thank you all for having me tonight. My name is Lindsay Kenner, I'm an audit partner with Snow Beer and Williams out of Weatherford. And I'm going to review through some of the highlights of the audit report and I'm going to start on page one of the balance report. Page one is the certificate of the board. This is where you approve or disapprove the audit report. It requires the signature of both the board president and the board secretary. And there's an unbound certificate that I left with Rebecca for y'all to sign and approve. If you can return that back to her, she can scan it and send it back to me. I'll drop that into the PDF version of the audit report, send that back over to her to do the submission to TEA and that's due by January the twenty-eighth. If you can sign and approve a couple of the bound copies, those can be returned Rebecca just to hold on hand in the business office. Move over to page two. Pages two through five are our independent auditors' report and I'm just going to review over some of the key points. I'm going to start in the first paragraph under Report on the Audit of the Financial Statements Under Opinions. We state that we have audited the accompanying financial statements of Joshua ISD as of the beginning of August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Move down to the next paragraph. In the first sentence, we state that in our opinion, the financial statements present barely in all material respects the financial position of Joshua ISD as of August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. This is a clean or an unmodified audit opinion and that's the highest level of assurance that we can give you on the financial statements, so that's the type of opinion you want to see in this audit report. Move down to the next paragraph under Basis for Opinions. We state that we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and also with government auditing standards. If you flip the page to page three. At the very top of the page, under Responsibilities of Management. Management is responsible for the preparation and the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles that are generally accepted in the United States of America and also for the internal control that's relevant to preparing the financial statements. Move down to the auditor's responsibility. Our objectives are to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error, and to issue an auditor's report that includes our opinions, which was the clean unmodified opinion. Move over a couple of pages to page five. In the last paragraph under Other Reporting. In accordance with government auditing standards, we've also issued our report on our consideration of Joshua ISD's internal controls over financial reporting and on test of compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, grant agreements, and other matters. And I like to point this out because this is another layer of requirements that we have to audit to for the government auditing standards, and we did not report any internal control findings or compliance findings. We're going to move over to page seventeen and take a look at the governmental funds balance sheet. Page seventeen is the balance sheet of August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. And just a quick overview of the layout of this financial statement, if you look on the left side of the page, at the top of the page, we have your assets. Liabilities are underneath assets. Deferred inflows of resources and fund balances are at the bottom. There are four columns that are going across the page. The first column on the far left is your general fund. The second column is your debt service fund, and these are the major funds for the year. The third column are your other governmental funds, which are the special revenue funds. And the last column on the right is the totaling column. The total assets of the district were twenty-two million, six thirty-two. Total liabilities were four million, three oh nine. Deferred inflows were eight seventy-two, six oh two, and fund balances were seventeen million, four fifty. And if you look back over in the general fund column on the far left, of the total fund balance of seventeen million, four fifty, eleven million, two twelve, with that's in your general fund, and most of that is on a signed fund balance of eleven million, one fifty-eight. We'll move over a couple of pages to page nineteen. Page nineteen is the income statement of the district for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. The layout of this financial statement, if you look on the left side of the page, at the top of the page, we have your revenues. Underneath revenues are expenditures. Other financing sources and uses and fund balances are at the bottom. There are the same four columns going across the page, and I'll start by going over the totaling column in the far right and then I'll flip back over and go into the general fund column. Your total revenues were seventy-seven million, four ninety-six. Total expenditures were eighty-one million, one oh six. You had net other financing sources of three sixty-three, eight ninety-one, which brought us to a decrease in fund balance of three million, two forty-six, and again, the ending fund balance of seventeen million, four fifty. And if you move back over to your general fund column on the far left, this is your operating fund. In comparing fiscal year twenty-three to fiscal year twenty-two, your revenues were up about six hundred thousand, so they were pretty comparable, and that was a combination of an increase in property tax that was offset by a decrease in state funding, so the net effect was an increase of six hundred thousand. Your total expenditures were up about six million, and the biggest fluctuations there were in function eleven, instruction was up about two and a half million. Most of that was for increases in payroll and also in technology supplies that were purchased. Function thirty-one, guidance counseling and evaluation services was up about one point one million, and that was mostly due to payroll that had been moved over to Essor in fiscal year twenty-two, was moved back into the general fund in twenty-three. Function fifty-one for facilities, maintenance, and operations was up about one point three million, which was a combination of, again, increase in payroll, increase in repairs and maintenance, and increases in utilities. And then function eighty-one, capital outlet, was actually down about one point eight million, and that was due to y'all had the turf project that was in twenty-two and that was where most of that cost was incurred, so there was just a final payment that was due in twenty-three. Other financing sources were two seventy-eight, oh ninety-four, so that brought us to a decrease in the fund balance of five million, four thirty, and the ending fund balance in the general fund of eleven million, two twelve. I'm going to move over to page fifty-three and look at the general fund budget. Pages fifty-three and fifty-four are the general fund budgetary comparison schedule. There are four columns going across the page, the first column on the far left is your original adopted line. The second column is your final amended budget. The third column were your actual revenues and expenditures. And the last column is the variance between your actual revenues and expenditures and your final amended budget. Looking through that variance column on the right, your actual revenues came in over budget by four million, one fourteen. If you go down to the bottom of the page, your actual expenditures came in under budget by three million, one eighty, and then also looking through that variance column, y'all didn't have any negative variance, so that's the other thing to look for. The last thing I'll go over is on page seventy-six and it should be the very last page of the balance report. Page seventy-six are the school first indicators that we're required to report on for the audit, and I won't read through all of these, but I did want to read through a couple that are directly related to our audit report. The first one is SF one, was there an unmodified opinion in the financial report on the financial statements as a whole? Yes, there was. The next one is SF two, were there any disclosures in the report or other sources of information concerning nonpayments or any terms of debt agreements at this year? And no, there was not. Move down to the center of the page to SF five. Did the report disclose any instances of material weaknesses in internal controls over financial reporting and compliance for local, state, or federal funds? No, it did not. And SF six, were there any disclosures in the report of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, or federal funds? And no, there was not. So all of the responses are favorable, y'all scored a hundred percent on these selected school first indicators. And that's the last thing I had to go over for the audit report. I know that's a lot to digest at one time. Did anyone have any questions that I can go over?
Well, thank you all very much. We very much appreciate, Rebecca and the business office do a great job monitoring things throughout the year, keeping things clean, and a really awesome job getting everything that we ask for for the audit, which is more information, I think, every year as standards change and new things come out, so we very much appreciate all of her work.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Glad to see you again.
Our recommendation to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three school year financial audit.
Eric Hossen, I'm going to be a free agenda item, Lee is presenting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lopez, second. Mr. Kevin Lee, any further discussion or questions or comments? All five. Consider as keeping update one twenty-two, affecting local policies, CQB local, technology, resources, cybersecurity, CSA local, security standards, safety and security, DC local, employment practices, EHP local, curriculum design, special programs, EHBC local, special program, compulsory, compulsory toward services and intensive program, EHBCA local, compulsory services and intensive programs, accelerated instruction, FBA local, compulsory attendance, FFAC local, wellness and health services, mental treatment, FFB, student welfare crisis intervention, the local student practice.
Okay, Mr. Cox, discuss, update one twenty-two, which includes revisions to legal policies based on legislative regulatory changes. Those local policies offer for consideration address the following topics, those are cybersecurity, court, foster drivers, dyslexia and related disorders, cellular instruction, career investigation days, opioid antagonists, threat assessment, student record, security, so my recommendation to approve the revisions to Joshua ISD, policies addressed in this update.
I hear most.
Motion.
Motion by the.
Second.
Hunter Burr, second. By Mr. Meyer, approved. Any further discussion or question? So, D, consider approval of the U.S. Department of Labor, twenty twenty-three, for prevailing wage rates for Johnson County for district construction projects.
Okay, so this would be any construction projects this year. As we stated in the workshop, the federal fiscal year runs different, so this would require us to adopt this annually, and so you'd be adopting the U.S. Department of Labor for prevailing wage rates for Johnson County. So my recommendation is that you guys approve the item, adopt the U.S. Department of Labor for prevailing wages for Johnson County, Texas as presented.
Good evening. Hold on, Mr. Prude, got a second? Second, I'll make a note, Lee, any further discussion or questions? All five. And so, D, consider approval of the TeachWorthy L.A. memorandum of understanding.
Okay, so this memorandum of understanding, as we discussed in workshop, is in regards to kind of grow your own program as far as building that teacher pipeline among our care professionals, even our students, and so it would be a partnership with TeachWorthy and also Indiana Westland University, so my recommendation would approve the TeachWorthy L.A. memorandum of understanding.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by.
Second.
Given age, second by Mr. Hunter Burr, any further questions, comments? All five. Close session of the meeting will adjourn. The board will convene in a closed session, discuss items, run out, discuss some of the meetings, accept the code, Texas five five ones, point zero zero one, dash, root, dash, five five one, point zero eight four. Time is going to be seven thirty-six. Time is going to be 7:36.
Yeah, so during um we were we uh excuse me, we reviewed the professional staff retirements, resignations from our executive session page and then now we need to consider employment resignation without good cause and propose a complaint to the State Board of Educators Certification for abandonment of contract.
Board makes a finding that good cause did not exist under Texas Education Code Section twenty one dot two one zero for Jamie Offert's resignation of her probationary contract for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. The administration and board did not consent to her resignation. Jamie Offert has failed to perform her contract and the board authorizes the superintendent to file a complaint with the State Board for Educator Certification to seek sanctions for her abandonment of her contract.
Motion by Ms. Brooke. I hear a second. Second by Ms. Law. Any further questions? All vote. Six up.
I make a motion where adjourned.
Okay, motion by Ms. Brooke to adjourn. I hear a second. Second, Ms. Cody Lee. All vote. Stand up.